Good evening and welcome to the convening of the Akron Public School Board on February 24th, 2025. Mr. Thompson, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison, present. Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Member Hall, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Hall. Now we have, we have. Okay, I recognize that Member Monar is here. So she's present, so you're gonna add her.
Yeah, I'm gonna adjust that.
Okay. Do we have to do another roll call?
No.
I just was wondering, because you tapped me.
I just wanted you to know she was here.
Thank you. Welcome, Member Monar. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Madam, I make a motion. I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to include the new, in new business, three new agenda items consisting of the first reading of the motion to rescind the following board policies. Board policy 2260.04, equity policy, board policy 2260.05, working definitions of diversity, equity, inclusion, excellence in education, and board policy 2260.07, racial equity policy. This is the first reading of a motion to amend, also the bylaw 0.155, committees by removing Section D equity committees.
Okay. It's been moved by Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members of the board, I first of all wasn't aware that we were going to be doing this, but since we're doing this, let's, let's just get to it. So could you, I need better understanding, what are you saying you are doing here?
Yes. What we're saying is that we're going to put these, these items in new business so we can discuss it further, and we also want to rescind it. We don't want to move too fast with the policies and move forward, so we're trying to move it a little slower. So that's why we're rescinding it at this point, and then we will hopefully have some more discussion later as well as in policy, a policy committee to decide what we're going to do from that point.
Thank you, thank you, Vice President and Madam President. Let me just, just, just bring a, since you're doing this at this particular time, let me bring this particular concern that I have to this board. So this is dealing with DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Yes.
And we are referring this to new business so that we can discuss this.
So we can discuss it further, and then we hopefully will move it to policy committee to also discuss it this Wednesday.
Which policy committee are we talking?
We're talking with Legal.
Legal. Madam, Madam President, let me just share my concern. This is dealing with DEI. I am concerned about the ethical process that we're going through here. DEI has employees that are members of board members' families. So I am concerned that this board may be moving into an ethical situation. It is not enough to simply abstain, to abstain from an issue when a family member is involved, but we need to recuse ourselves. And so as I see it, we have three members sitting here that should consider, and perhaps you want to ask Legal, if you should recuse yourself from even discussing this. Vice President Alexander, Member Hall, and Member Harrison. So this is serious stuff. I need, think we need to get a legal opinion if we can proceed with the three board members involved in this discussion.
Yes, and Ms. Sykes, I don't have any problem asking Legal if we could do that, and if they say yes, we're fine with it. If they say that we need to recuse ourselves and remove, then that's okay. I'm okay with it.
Madam President, thank you, thank you, Vice President Alexander. And before we take a vote, we need to do that. We need to find that out now, because we do not want to put this board in jeopardy. Okay?
Thank you, Member Sykes. And for a point of clarity, our board policy does speak to this, and it says exactly what Member Sykes is stating, that in the event that a board member has a relative or a loved one or someone that they're connected to, that they are, that they're to refrain from not only the vote, but also any discussions. So I'm not sure that it's, there's necessarily a need for Legal. The proper action would be simply to just recu, you will recuse yourself from any further discussions or as well as voting on the matter. Additionally, as I understood it, and we can get clarity, because I know it said it was being referred to Legal, and I know there, there's some time constrictions, but my understanding is being referred back to the, back to committee.
Yes.
To the Equity Committee for further discussion. Member Sykes?
Yes, Madam President, and since Vice President Alexander is the Chair of Legal, then we, again, we need to deal with this before we do anything else.
If policy says that, then we'll do it.
Policy says that.
Policy says we'll do it. I have no problem.
Policy says that. Not only does policy says that, but the Ohio Ethics Board says that.
And it says that, I'm okay with it. And we'll have to follow what they say to do.
Yeah.
That's all.
We must.
And so, again, a point of clarity. So if it goes to the Ethical Committee, Member Hall is the Chair of the Ethical Committee. And so, being that you are one of the ones that recused, then it would go to the co-chair to conduct the meeting. And so, at this time, we've heard what's on the floor, which is, which is correct when we get to the discussions of the matter. As I stated, as I understand that these matters were being moved to new business, then to be referred to, back to committee, I sent the email to the entire board with this, that I was going to make the recommendation and refer, that I was going to ask to remove these from the agenda into new business, and then refer that they be sent back to the Equity Committee. I sent this email yesterday evening. But in any event, that's where it would be further, just a more audit on the policies with more fidelity to make sure that things are being done in a decent and proper manner. So that's my understanding, not necessarily that we would discuss it as the board on this floor at this time, but that the refer, that when new business, it goes to new business, then to be sent back to committee. And as what has already been stated, will go forth, that those members having family members and have a possible conflict will recuse themselves and not be involved in the discussion.
Madam President, for clarity, could I have the items in which we are, I believe there were three that were stated. Could, could I have those numbers one more time?
Yes, policy 2260.04, policy 2260.05, policy 2260.07, and board bylaw 0155, Section D.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. So there was, there is a motion that is on the floor. Member Sykes, in the discussion, posited the, the question in regards to the members recusing themselves. I think as far as the unclarity for myself is that because you brought the motion, if we need to rescind and I, and the motion to whereas I bring the motion and you second the motion, then someone else should second it just for the sake of making sure we don't find ourselves in any issue.
That's fine, Madam President, as long as we do what we're supposed to do, it's right.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice President. So, I move to amend the agenda to include new business, three new agenda items consisting of a first reading of a motion to rescind the following board policies. Board policy 2260.04, equity policy. Board policy 2260.05, working definition for diversity, equity, inclusion, and excellence in education. And board policy 2260.07, racial equity. A first read of a motion to amend board, board bylaw 0155, committees by removing Section D Equity Committee. So it's been moved. Is there?
Second.
Thank you, Member. It's, it's been moved by.
She cannot say.
No, you seconded it, Member Sykes. Yeah. It's been moved by President Jackson, seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. And for the record, abstaining will be Vice President Alexander, Member Hall, and Member Greg Harrison.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries four oh.
Thank you. Moving on, we will have recognition by the Superintendent for the Book Club of the Month.
Thank you, President Jackson. Congratulations to our top readers for January, for Elementary, Kindergartner, Slater Harris from Betty Jane, who read an impressive 52 books. Let's give her a hand, please. Middle school Cooper Gren draw, seventh grader from National Inventors Hall of Fame, who read nine books. Cooper is a repeated winner from last month. Awesome job to Cooper. Let's give him a hand, please. And for high school, Danae Boone, a 10th grader from Ellett CLC, who read three books. In total, our scholars achieved the following milestones, K through five, 590 books, middle schoolers, 87 books, and high schoolers, 26 books. And special congratulations to the schools with the highest number of books read. Betty Jane, CLC, with 252 books. Ennis Middle School with 62 books, and STEM High School with 14 books. Let's give them a hand, please. Are our scholars present? Are any of our scholars present? Come on up.
Please come to the front to be recognized by your board and superintendent. Great job, Slater. All right, Navy JR2C.
Thank you. And we want to thank ACME for the generous support of providing gift cards for our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we will have a board member and board scholar member reflections. Today, we have with us Ms. Zaya West, representing Firestone High School. Zaya, without further ado, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, and honorable board members and distinguished guests. My name is Zaya West. I'm a senior at Firestone CLC. After high school, I plan to attend a four-year college and major in special education with either a double major or a minor in business management. However, I have not made my final college decision yet. During my time at Firestone, I've had the privilege of being involved in many activities. I'm a four-year letterman in two sports, golf and track and field. I do shot put and discus. I do not run. I am a two-time city champion in the shot put, and I was the runner-up last year. I'm also, in 2023, I was the city champion in the discus. I've also been a track captain for three years. Beyond athletics, I've been active in several organizations. I'm the member of the student, Summit County Youth Coalition, the founder of C Akron Students for Equity and Excellence. I'm involved with the youth NAACP. I serve as the president of the locker room experience. I was the vice president of Student Council, and I'm a part of the Always Climb group led by the amazing Bryce Harris. Additionally, I founded a nonprofit called Limitless Dreams, which advocates for individuals with special healthcare needs through sports and activities. We recently hosted our second event this past September, and I hope to continue it at the collegiate level. This is my second year as a scholar board member, and as I approach graduation, it is bittersweet to leave, but I'm grateful for the opportunity to use my voice at this platform. As my time at Akron Public Schools comes to the end, I've been reflecting on the changes I hope to see. Despite my efforts to be involved and use my voice, there are still moments where I feel unheard, and I know many other students across the district feel the same way. Many of us dedicate time, energy, and even sacrifice time away from school and school-wide activities, only to feel like we're running into a brick wall. While I recognize there's opportunities for students to be heard, like attending board meetings like today, the reality is speaking at a board meeting can be very intimidating, especially today, like, and also inaccessible for many people. Students want to be heard in Akron Public Schools, and we really want to try, but it's also very hard, and it's, again, very intimidating. So I'm just here to share that. I know I can't solve every problem that students face, but I want to do more for a diverse, for diverse, diverse voices to be heard and valued, sorry. My call to action is simple. I propose setting up dedicated days where students can meet directly with board members and the superintendent. This will create opportunities to build genuine relationships, break down barriers, and ensure students can feel seen and heard. Without this connection, we cannot truly improve the culture of our school district. I'll say from personal experience, I have a younger sister, she goes to Miller South, she's in eighth grade, and you couldn't pay her a billion dollars to try to go up to Firestone. And it kind of hurts, because I want to, her to share that same experience that I had. I love Firestone, you know, stone to the bone. That's just me. But still, at the same time, it's very hard being a high schooler. It's just, I will say for me, when I was talking to my friends before I came here today, I was like, how does school feel to you guys? It feels like prison. Like, I mean, we have gates at our bathrooms, so that doesn't really help. We go through metal detectors. And my sister, when I was talking to her, she said, I don't want to feel like that. When she visited private schools, and I, I get, you know, we've been through a lot as a school district, but when she visited private schools, like, she said, I was kind of shocked that I didn't have to go through metal detectors when I walked in. I thought somebody was gonna stop, stop me or ask to see my yonder bag or something like that. But I'm only one person, and so my issues aren't everyone else's issues, but I want people to be heard and seen. So thank you for allowing me to share my space. Thank you for allowing me the space to share my thoughts and experience. I appreciate the time and the consideration you've given me, and I hope my words inspire meaningful action for the further of Akron Public Schools. Thank you.
I'm always so impressed and thankful for your insight, Zaya. And I speak the same talk. I just talked about that at our last board retreat, the importance of student voice and speaking to board members so that you know that you have a seat at the table, and so that we can culminate and come with action steps that really speak to the needs of the school in order to impact the culture and the climate of the school. So thank you so much for sharing. And you speak, your voice speaks volumes, not just for you. That sentiment is a lot of your student bodies. That's why you're a student board member, just like each of us. We represent someone. I particularly, I know I represent you. I represent students for sure. And so, again, thank you for that, and thank you for everything that you're doing. I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional board comments for Zaya? And then board reflections. Member Hall, yes?
Thank you, Madam President. This is my comment for Ms. Zaya. I've told you many times, your voice speaks volume. You're courageous. You are the example which, you know, I told you, I would love for my little one to see. You're confident, and I just, along with all the other members of C and other groups and other board members that come here to speak, I just see your future being great. I see you maybe one day being around this table, because every time we say we leave in Akron, somehow it brings us right back. And just keep doing what you're doing, and continue to have a successful senior year.
I'm trying.
And make sure that you are getting scholarships and applying for scholarships.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Got it. Thank you.
Also, the Hero K Stubs Scholarship for our scholars is available. You can email Ms. Jackson for it, and Ms. Clover is here. She has the information, I know, because Ms. Green, Ms. Green told me she was gonna send it to you. I'll make sure you have it. And so it can be shared with our scholars, and I'll make sure Zaya has that. The deadline has been extended. Are there any other board comments for our student board member? All right, if not, let's give her, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Member Autry.
Thank you so much. So, Zaya, as everyone else has already said, extremely proud of you, just watching your growth over these last few years. I just want to continue to encourage you. I'm sorry that you feel unheard at times. I'm sorry that you've, your siblings' experience about feeling in prison. And so that's something, you know, that definitely needs to be addressed. And I know, speaking with students, you probably have solutions that we haven't even thought about. So I just want to, as the Firestone liaison, I know you just have a few short months left, but please reach out. I'd be happy to come and speak with you and some of your peers. I know my schedule is a little bit more flexible than most, working part-time, but I'm available to come and listen and hear what solutions that you might have to offer for some of those things.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to add one more thing. I know I've kind of said a lot, but just like moving forward, I would say for me, when I'm in these different organizations, it's kind of like the same people I see every day. And I just wanted to highlight that, like, sometimes the same person can only speak on so much. So like, moving forward, if there were like, you know, one group or one student voice had one group of people and then the next, it's not always the same. I'll say for me, I see the same six people every other week, depending on which field trip I go to. So just moving forward, that's just also something else I wanted to see. But thank you, I will reach out.
Thank you. Are there any, yes, Vice President Alexander?
Yeah, I just want to say one quick comment. Don't be, you said you're nervous. Try not to be nervous. We all get nervous. Even as adults, we still come here, we have to speak, we get nervous. We go other places, we get nervous. But just continue to do what you're doing. You'll be fine, and you'll do well, okay? All right, thank you.
Member Monar, thank you.
Thank you. Zaya, as everyone else said, it's nice to see you. I saw you, you worked so hard. Saw you track practice, I think, last.
It was track practice.
But as everyone else said, every time I see you, I get the impression of someone who is more confident. I, you seem more confident every time I see you. And especially today, as you said, this could be a very intimidating crowd. So if you had any advice or tips, if you don't have it now, I don't want to put you on the spot, but as you go back to that same group of six people of what you are doing to be so confident when you're here, because this is intimidating for all of us.
For me, I say advice that I, I do sometimes, and not saying, I know, there's a lot of different religions and stuff like that. I pray. But also, I kind of like, if you're speaking to a big crowd, find someone that you know. I just so happen to. I just so happen to know Mr. Johnson that's standing right in front of me. So like when I talk, I just like look up at him from time to time. Or it's just like, I don't know, I feel like because I know all you guys, it's a little bit easier. But I've been, especially working with Always Climbing, they kind of helped me to where I was, where I just, you know, can be in different positions and learn how to do public speaking. But some of the kids that are in there, especially our sophomores, you know, it's a little bit harder for them, but I definitely, you know, Ms. Hall mentioned that Akron has a way of bringing you back. I'm like, I'm trying to pick a college. I'm like, I don't really want to go nowhere far because my work here, I still feel like I have work here to do.
All right, any other comments for our board member? If not, let's give Zaya another round of applause. All right, now, are there any board member community reflections? Member Sykes?
Thank you, Madam President. And Ms. West, you're so impressive. You're so impressive, as are so many of our students and so many of our administrators, teachers and supporters here of Akron Public School. Until just recently, Akron Public Schools was recognized on the floor of the U S Congress. Recognized on the floor of the U S Congress. And because of that, I want to congratulate everyone, all of us, and share this with you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today I rise to recognize Katrina Halasa, Joanna O'Neal and Krista Galloway of the Akron Public Schools Science and Health Department as Ohio's 13th Congressional District Champions of the Week. The department recently earned the Presidential Award for Excellence in STEM Mentoring on behalf of the White House Office of Science and Technology Policy and the National Science Foundation. As one of just five organizations in the country to earn this award, this is truly an astounding achievement and one that our entire community should be proud of. This prestigious award recognizes their dedication to shaping the future of science and technology through mentorship, helping to ensure our STEM workforce reflects the diverse talent of America. Akron Public Schools' mission is to prepare each child for success and as an alum of Akron Public Schools, I can attest to their ability to create successful students. Katrina, Joanna and Krista support this mission through Science and Health Department by promoting inquiry and STEM opportunities in and beyond the classroom. Together Katrina Joanna provides a combined mentoring and during Dr. Halasa's 16-year tenure, the department lowered barriers by providing STEM opportunities to over 50,000 diverse scholars. Their focus on a three-tiered approach consisting of teachers, scholars and partners allows all levels of our community to get involved in educating and mentoring our students to success. Ohio's 13th Congressional District has long been known for its scientific innovation and Krista are also helping to ensure this legacy for generations to come. Congratulations again to Katrina Halasa, Joanna O'Neal and Krista Galloway on this fantastic accomplishment and thank you for all you do for our students and scholars. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I yield back.
What an honor. Thank you, Member Sykes, for sharing such a wonderful community reflection representing Akron, Ohio and Akron Public Schools. And you guys didn't hear, Zaya, say it into the mic like Ms. Jackson said. What'd you say?
Amelia Sykes is a Firestone alum, just want to mention that.
She said, she said, just so they know, I hope they know she's a Firestone.
I'm just saying, you know, greatness comes out of Firestone.
Yes, oh, you, you okay, Ms. Halasa? Okay?
I just love the Halasa family. You know, Dr. Katrina, I've been doing science fair since, Lord have mercy. And your sister is amazing. I love talking to her every day. And you know, I just love seeing your face.
So again, thank you so much, Member Sykes, for sharing that. And it's great, we have one of our own community members and high school graduates that is now a member of the United States Congress. What they see, that can be, so it's just, that's just excellent. I love everything about it. Are there any other community reflections, board reflections? Member Hall, please.
Thank you, Madam President, and congratulations to you, Mrs. Sykes. You and Mr. Sykes produced that amazing woman, Amelia Sykes, you know, and this is not about reflection right now, but my daughter takes the bar tomorrow. So, I get so choked up and emotional, it's a two-day process, the bar in Chicago. Please, everybody, just say a prayer in the morning for her. She will pass this. So excellence does look great on us. Okay, so I attended the Youth Empowerment Summit that was put on by the Historical Society on February 14th at the J C C, which is a wonderful event. I was not able to attend the whole thing. Zaya, you were there, but it was so awesome for the part that I was there to actually hear students talk about the needs and how they don't see, they're not heard or they're not seen and what we need to do. So they didn't just bring up problems, they gave solutions. And that's the best thing, you know, we always have problems, 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 but we don't ever give recommendations of solutions. So our young, our youth, you guys are on the ball. You guys are rolling and I'm so proud of you. Also, I attended the winter concerts at North High School with the strings instruments. We have some talented kids. I thought about the times when I used to play the violin. I wouldn't dare pick it up now and it would just be like screech. So congratulations to all the students who participated in the winter concert series. And thank you to Ms. Don Wilson for putting that on, job well done. I also attended the Black Chamber of Commerce kickoff. What an exciting event. It just gives me chills and it, it also lets our students know that, you know, you don't have to continue to wait for a seat at the table. You can pull a chair up, you know, and just having these opportunities to open more doors for our children. Also, I wanted to just throw this out here. Tumble Together is a free washing and drying event that the city of Akron is putting on Wednesday, March 5th, from 3:00 to 7:00. And I'll have some more of these flyers here. This is for, it's going to be held at the West Side Laundromat. It's a new laundromat on Copley Road, also a gas station. This is a free service to all residents of Akron. Come and get your clothes washed. This is to uplift our community, to make sure that if you're having just issues with, you don't have a washer and dryer or if you just need that extra support and that help just to make you feel whole again. Again, it's free, up to three loads. The detergent is supplied for you, so you don't have to worry about that. And you will also be served a meal. So again, March 5th, Wednesday, from 3:00 to 7:00 at the new West Side Laundromat. Come and wash your clothes. Now you will be washing your own clothes, but the service will be free to all and also the detergent and a meal. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall, yes, Member Molinar, Dr. Molinar.
Thank you, President Jackson. My reflection today is last week, I guess it was last week-ish, I went to school, normal day, came pick up my kids and I noticed my little boy came out in a new coat. And, and he got in the car and he went, mommy, my zipper was broken and I have a new coat. Because I thought, I, I don't know, I was just going to let him go through the winter. It's almost over, he's going to grow. The coat mostly worked. And then, and then my other son got in the car and he goes, we all got new coats. And I looked and I saw that every student in their school had gotten a new coat, not just my kid with the broken zipper. So it made me reflect that maybe I should have gotten my kid a coat sooner, but they all got coats. And then the next day was my son's birthday party and all the kids that came to his birthday party were wearing their new coats that they had gotten from school. And it made me reflect on the breakfast that we give all students and the lunch that we give all students. We aren't singling out the students that seem like they need it desperately. We are giving this to all of our students and providing this to us. And I think at this point in time, it's a great example of what might be labeled under a framework of D E I work that has less to do with race, but with resources. And so much of what this district has been able to accomplish and other organizations and partnerships have been able to accomplish have a lot to do with dignity and empathy and community. And I just want to say that I'm grateful for this work. I am proud of our community. I have received so many emails. I'm sorry, I do not have time to respond to all of them. I do try to respond, but there was one email from an alumni, Zoe Dong, and there are two things I'm going to say. Read from this email. "The board needs to take a courageous stance to protect the students of Akron and if the board can't stand up for these children, what are we doing as a city government?" And we are leaders, we are representatives, we are role models. And our community, as representatives, our community is telling us, our community is showing up and messaging us the values that are important to them. And I think of what we're doing and the decisions we make and what side of history we are putting ourselves on. And I want to say that I'm on the side that gives kids coats and food and dignity.
Well said, Member Molinar, thank you for that. Are there any other board community reflections? Member Autry?
Thank you so much, Madam President. And so it looks like they have it on the screen already. You can put it back up there. I just wanted to share out about a positive event organized by our middle school cheerleaders and their coaches. They will be hosting the first annual For the Love of Cheer Showcase on March the 8th. It's a Saturday at 11:30 a.m. at Higher Middle School. I am so proud of these young people who worked together to put this first annual event on. As you know, cheer, or you may not know, cheerleading is probably the most expensive sport. So proceeds from this event will help support those team seasons. And so encourage you to come out and enjoy the cheerleaders. They're always cheering for everybody else, so come out and cheer for them. I'd also like to congratulate Higher Middle School Girls Basketball, Bookto Boys Middle School Basketball, who are the City Series champs. And also North High School Wrestling and Ennis Middle School Wrestling. Congratulations to those sports teams and their coaches and those parents and families who support them. Again, sports just unites us all. Those students work really hard to do their best and they should be congratulated. And I do think Bookto High School and Garfield High School as well, boys' basketball are in the tournament and they're still live and active. Good luck to those teams and congratulations. I'd like to also share that since we last met, I also attended the Winter Concert Series. Choirs, high school choirs in around, over at Firestone. It was an amazing event to see our young people again, practicing and excited to come and show off what they practice. Congratulations to those directors and also to Don Wilson again for putting this together for so many years. All of the choirs had wonderful, beautiful, custom robes, thanks to the district. So thanks to the district for that. And then also, I was able to attend the Fair School Funding Webinar this past Friday. I think our treasurer is going to be sharing more out about that. But I just want to encourage each and every person to visit fairschoolfundingplan.com, fairschoolfundingplan.com to get a little bit more information. This is law and we have the opportunity for it to have its final two years of funding so that it's fully implemented. And this lawful funding formula was put together by active superintendents and treasurers to help school districts, just like the us. And so it is important that they have updated input information for the Fair School Funding Formula. And I'm encouraging each and every one of you to visit the website so that they have sample letters so that you can notify our representatives to make sure they support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Autry. Are there any other board community reflections? All right, since our last meeting, first I would like to make an announcement and you can go to Carla Jackson for School Board and also Ms. Clover is going to share this throughout the district. I'll make sure she has that and Zaya, I'll email you directly. Is the Harold K Stubbs Scholarship applications are open and the deadline has been extended. The application is on my Carla Jackson for School Board web page, but it also will be disseminated, as I'm understanding, throughout the district. If I'm speaking out of turn, Ms. Clover, please correct me so I'm not giving them wrong information once I give it to you. And Zaya, I'll make sure you have it as well. Just a little background, because we are ending February, which is Black History Month. Judge Harold K Stubbs is African-American male. The Justice Center is actually named after him. He was married to Sandra Stubbs, who served as the principal of Bookto High School. A classy lady, very elegant. They attend St. Paul African American Episcopal Church, which is also my church home and where the scholarship is housed to honor his legacy and his work. Judge Stubbs was a member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated and his work and his legacy continues on through the scholarships that's provided. So please apply, apply, apply. We also want to thank for our partners that support our learners in the district with other scholarships. So please make sure, scholars, that you are stopping by the council's office in the front of the office to get those items. Also, just to talk about some other outstanding achievements, like everyone else said, I too attended the winter concerts. I love everything that Ms. Wilson does because she does it with the spirit of excellence. On Friday, the 21st, I attended the winter concert at Bookto. However, I quickly learned that that had been moved to Garfield. And so I ended up staying for the Bookto basketball game. Our chief of security was there and he laughed at me, but it was a great time and I had the opportunity to speak with Principal Beecher as well as Mr. Antoine, who was over at Cosmetology Department. And I also had the opportunity to meet some of our wonderful learners who are participants in our cosmetology. Damarianna Evans and Mayana Ingle, who shares some exciting news along with their classmates, Rain Porter and Akaya Varner, who have completed all 1,500 hours required for their cosmetology hours. They will have completed by the time they walk the stage, meaning they will be eligible to take their state boards to become licensed cosmetologists. And so we celebrate that type of excellence happening in our district. Additionally, I was thrilled to see Jason Bailey. Some of you may remember, I talked about the Bailey brand when I was highlighting all of our young entrepreneurs in our district and I was wearing his hoodie. So now, Dr. Chapman, Jason Bailey is actually working as a peer professional at Bookto High School. And so, isn't that excellent? Yes. And so he's giving back to his alma mater and he's still doing his business thing. So I thought that that was great as well. I also attended February 11th, as Member Autry stated, the choirs in around at Firestone. Absolutely wonderful. And then on February 20th, 20, excuse me, I attended the Miller South performances and it was just great. These are just some small reflections of exceptional talent, commitment and hard work demonstrated by our students, staff and community every day. The Philharmonic actually performed, it was the youth Philharmonic at Firestone and it was exceptional. And so again, excellence does look different and it looks like when we collectively come together to give our students these experiential opportunities such as the arts and art in performing and in actual drawing. So that concludes my community reflections for today. Now we will go with our public reflections to the board. First, I have to read this little, this little part. "Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate persons for follow-up. Please state your name and group affiliations." Member Harrison stated, I think we need to update that, but the first person we have is Dave Boone. Dave Boone Ordain, I'm sorry, I can't, last name is Boone, B O O N. Okay, Sue Logri, Laurie? Sue Laurie, did I say your name right, Sue? Laurie? Lockery, okay, thank you. Excuse the mispronunciation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Lockry. I am a proud professional educator in our early learning program. I come before you tonight because I believe many of you have been led to believe that the concerns in our preschool classrooms that we brought up last year have been resolved. I'm here to tell you there are still many concerns that are out there. Alarming practices are still in place, practices that put the safety and well-being of our youngest students at risk. These aren't minor inconveniences. I'm talking about systemic failures that impact the care, supervision and security of the children entrusted into us every day. Some students continue to wait too long to be diapered or changed. When they are, many times they are changed late, changed standing up or placed on a bathroom floor instead of a clean and safe changing table. Meanwhile, out of the teachers who responded to surveys, 50% of the teachers have gone without lunch for over 20 days. 37.5% have missed their planning period for more than 20 days. And an incredible 70% of ELP teachers have had no paraprofessional coverage for more than 20 days, a full four weeks, leaving them dangerously alone in a classroom, struggling to safely supervise far too many students. These conditions are unacceptable, both for the children we serve, the educators who care for them, and most importantly, the families that trust us with their children. Now, our educators have been told by Human Capital that four ELP classrooms at Essex and one, I found out tonight, at Case are being closed. Actually, there are five classrooms at Essex. You're being told there's four, there's five. There were six until January. January, we closed one of our classes and those children were absorbed by the remaining five classrooms at Essex. Meanwhile, the superintendent has publicly stated that these classrooms are simply being moved. Educators and parents deserve to know the truth. This decision affects 106 scholar spots. And if these classrooms are being moved and not closed, why is Human Capital refusing to tell our educators where their classrooms are going? A lack of transparency is yet another example of how little regard is given to the very people responsible for our youngest learners. I'm not being an alarmist. Highly qualified and veteran educators at every level are leaving this district because of the way they are being treated. The exodus will continue the end of this school year and will be alarming. If this administration put as much time, effort and money into guaranteeing the right classroom, into guaranteeing the right classroom staffing levels as they do with continuing to add administrator after administrator at 10 North Main, perhaps we could assure our families that the children placed in our care will be safe. Unfortunately, our educators, who know the reality of what is actually happening in our buildings, do not believe they can make that assurance. The educators in this district have been sounding the alarm, yet our concerns are met with silence or worse, with empty reassurances that do not translate into real action. Our students and their families deserve better and we, as educators, have dedicated ourselves to this work and this district deserve better. I urge you to take a long, hard look at what is actually happening and not what you're being led to believe. Listen to the educators. Listen to us. Let us talk to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for sharing with us. Next, we have Olivia Lockry.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Lockry and I am an intervention specialist at Mason CLC. I work in a sale unit, which is a classroom designed to support students who require moderate assistance so that they can succeed in an inclusive general education environment. This is the purpose of the sale program, to help to bridge the gap, to provide the scaffolding necessary for students to access learning alongside their peers. But that is not the reality that I face in my classroom this school year. Over half of my students have been diagnosed with autism, some of them more severe autism. Some of these students should not be in a sale unit. They should be placed in an achieve classroom, a program specifically designed to meet their unique learning needs. Achieve classrooms are structured, resourced and staffed to provide the targeted interventions and supports that the autistic students require to thrive. This is not just best practice, but it is our district's protocol. Yet, when I ask why my students are not receiving the placement that they deserve, I am told there is no room, no room in the very program created to serve them, no room to follow the guidelines set forth to ensure that every child receives the education that they are legally entitled to. And so these students, very bright, capable, full of potential, are placed in a setting that does not fully meet their needs. And let's be clear, this is not just a matter of logistics. This is about equity. This is about access. This is about a system that prioritizes convenience over compliance, efficiency over effectiveness, and in doing so fails the very students it claims to serve. But more concerningly, I am required to support these misplaced students in a continually understaffed classroom. Some days, I work from entry to dismissal with no lunch and no planning. Far too many of my colleagues in the same classrooms work with no lunch or no planning every single day. This has become standard practice in this district. Tell the teachers to make it work. Tell the teachers to be a team player. Tell the teachers to accept this kind of treatment. If they don't like it, then they can file a grievance. It is simply not sustainable. We are at a breaking point and nobody appears to care enough to actually listen to us. We who are on the front lines of this district are doing everything we can to hold the pieces together while being stretched beyond our limits. You are being led to believe that everything is fine. I respectfully ask you to make some hard decisions about the lack of staffing in our classrooms, specifically those classrooms serving our students with disabilities. And make this an issue, this issue a priority for the board to help us to keep our students safe, not just with words, but with real immediate action. Thank you for your time and for helping me to keep my students safe.
Next, we have Megan Lugo.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Megan Lugo. I am an Akron resident and the mother of three children. I stand opposed to the repeal of the equity and diversity language proposed and my understanding, which is touchy of the things that I heard earlier, is correct. I applaud the deference and time taken to examine this issue. Indeed, I believe that amendments to the language are more prudent and appropriate at this time. As an educator at the University of Akron who teaches and researches diversity, equity and inclusion, I deeply understand the confusion and panic felt in light of the new political climate we find ourselves in. I also understand fears of losing funding and legal repercussions for standing for these values. But I also therefore understand that throwing the baby out with the bathwater is not only unnecessary, but represents a weak and cowardly path forward. Yes, it is a challenge to carefully evaluate the language in the bylaws to best comply with the law, which admittedly, as it stands, is even in a place of flux with judicial bodies currently evaluating whether these mandates are legal and if compliance is even merited. But these are challenging times. These are the times we prepare ourselves for and most importantly, as educators, our children for. As I've told my own children when explaining to them what is happening in this country and how it affects mommy's job, I've told them I have a choice. I can cower in fear and hide with my tail between my legs in the face of irrefutable wrongdoing, or I can stand up for what's right, even if it's hard. And I choose the latter and I hope you all do too, because that's what our children deserve from leaders and educators and our school system at this time, courage. Should the political winds of change lead you to gut these provisions, I ask you to reconsider. What lessons are we teaching our children by repealing these bylaws and removing these policies? Were these principles and ideals not just moral, right and valid a few years ago? Why, if they are or were the right things to have done then, would we change them now? Are we not teaching our students, our children then, by repealing bylaws that acknowledge systemic and immoral racism, bias and prejudice against the very students who attend this district, that not only is it better to cater to evil when it presents itself, but also that their dignity and their humanity is something we are willing to barter? Our students deserve better in this hour of trial. They deserve your patience in carefully evaluating these bylaws and amending them as is only absolutely necessary instead of a quick and heartless gut job. They deserve people standing for their right to an education that acknowledges how our systems failed them. They deserve your courage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lugo. Next, we will have, I believe the name is Dewan? I'm sorry, Dewan. Could you come up and give me the pronunciation of your last name? I can't.
I'm Wash.
Wash, okay. Thank you, Mr. Wash.
Thank you, Board. Definitely am very proud of the Akron community. I love the diversity that is in the room. I do want to just point out a couple of different things though, right? When we talk about race in this country, one of the things that's very important is to understand where it came from, right? Johann Blumenbach, Karl Linnaeus, the St. Maurel, you know, these ideas were brought to us by European colonizers, meant to divide. You know, I definitely want to defer to you all to wait and give this more research and study, but it's important to point out that the diversity of this room, race didn't do that, values did that. And this administration is attacking our values, right? I'm going to call a spade a spade. We have fascists and Nazis in the White House, right? It's important for us to stand up to that and to not bend the knee. One of the things that I was looking at just recently was not only understanding the history of where race is coming from, but understanding that it's a caste system. And if this is the beginning phases of that caste system beginning to crumble, it's important for us to maintain the things that they can't take from us. They can't take away our values. They can't take away our identity. They can't take away our culture, right? I don't know if y'all watched the Super Bowl and saw that Kendrick Lamar said the cultural divide, right? That's reality that we live in, right? And so I do think that there are novel ways for us to look at this problem. I do think that you can research and study how you can enable our students to still get their needs met, right? You can look at socioeconomic status, you can look at extracurricular participation, geographic distribution, attendance rates, mobility rates. There are lots of different ways that we can look at this issue and maintain our dignity, right? Like, I understand the importance of protecting funding. Nobody wants a district that is underfunded, right? We're already dealing with that problem all over the country. But in order to be able to do that, it's important that we protect our students. Although Dr. Inba, I don't know if he's going to be mentioning the things that he's brought up today, but there are some recommendations that he's brought, put together for the urbanly young professionals that I definitely would like for you to look into and to consider. Because now is an important time for you to stand up, not sit down, not acquiesce to Nazis, because that's what they are, right? And they are definitely coming for us. And the reality is that, again, the cultural divide, the division between right and left, this is an up and down problem, not a right and left problem. Elon Musk don't care if you're Republican, he don't care if you're Democrat, he cares about power and money, just like Donald Trump does. And if we continue to fight amongst each other, right, we're seeing what's happening as a result of that now. You see so many Trump supporters that are like, oh, it wasn't supposed to be me. Well, it is you and it's going to continue to be you until we recognize that it's a top and down issue that we're fighting and it's important that we stand together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wash. 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 W-A-S-H, I believe. Thank you, Dewan Wash. Next, we will have Dr. NJ Akbar.
I'm not as tall as Dewan. Thank you, thank you. All right. So good afternoon or evening, everyone. As you know, I've sent you an email with two documents outlining in detail your options to move forward as well as some proposed resolutions as alternatives to repeal. As you know, you know, there was a reason why the racial equity policy was enacted. There's a reason why the chief diversity officer position is included in the policy rather than left to the discretion of administration. And there's a reason why the Board of Education, you, all of you, are the policymaking body and the only people who have that responsibility. And we deserve, as citizens of this city, for you to be careful, to be thoughtful, to be deliberate and to be transparent and most of all, to include the public's input in your process. There is absolutely no excellence without access, without diversity, equity and inclusion. There's absolutely no excellence if you're not paying attention intentionally to where our students fall through the cracks. There's no excellence. I also want to remind you that a federal judge has blocked the executive order banning DEI and ruled that it likely exceeds executive authority. So I ask, why are we moving in this direction? I want to give you a little history around the racial equity policy, why it was established. It was established to evaluate district-wide outcomes and align practices to ensure all students have access to success. It did not grant preferences to any group, but to intentionally ensure that no one was falling through the cracks. It was derived from the 2020 resolution as the first district to have a resolution to declare racism as a public health crisis, the resolution that was modeled across this country. We were on the right side of history then. We need to be on the right side of history now. APS is a public school, which means we cannot turn students away. We don't pick and choose who we serve. We serve everybody. Everybody who comes here, we serve. We open our doors. The chief diversity officer position was designed as a systemic auditor. If you look in the racial equity policy, that word is there intentionally to ensure that we're looking at our policies and practices and resources and that student success and accountability is data-driven and continuous improvement processes are followed. It is not preferential. That position is an auditor. We must not abandon our responsibility to advocate for students and staff based off political pressures. They're asking us to willingly give away our rights. And I stand before you with all the people here in this body, in the gallery, to say we do not want our rights willingly given away. So thank you very much. And remember that the Board's decision will be a lasting decision, will have a lasting impact. It will reverberate all across this community and the people here and others are your external accountability. We will continue to come here, we will continue to speak, and we want the chief diversity officer to be that internal auditor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Next, we have Patricia Maiten. I'm sorry, Ms. Patricia, did I say your name properly? Maiten, yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me a chance to comment. In looking at the Akron paper, seeing that you're adding a couple of new positions, I've spent my whole career helping hospitals across the country navigate reorganizations, restructuring, saving jobs at the, for patient care. That's the number one thing in health system. I think of, from you all, from the student side, the most important part is how we're educating our students. So when I look at the addition of these two positions, I'm hoping when you bring this to the Board, there's clarity of, are they replacing additional ones? What are you doing when you think about adding administrative overhead? When I hear the comments from your teachers and the groups here today, spending money in the classroom is most important so we can educate our students. in the classroom is most important so we can educate our students. So I would just like to make sure that as you bring those positions forward, it's clear if they are additions and adds, are you removing positions that were there before, how you are streamlining the organization, especially in light of the challenges that the system has from a financial perspective and where our students are ranked in the state of Ohio with how much is being spent on their education and the outcomes that we're having. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly Lee or Laye. Kelly Laye.
Madam President, my mentor, Kelly Lee, unfortunately, she walked here earlier. She had to kill her kids, so she gave three minutes to me. Is that okay if I speak on behalf of her? It's all right. Thank you so much, Madam President. Good evening. My name is Saowen, and indeed, there were a lot of things going on in the past, last month in our country. And it is very scary for me as a refugee, a former refugee and immigrant, and I feel very nervous for my community. So today, I want to speak from my heart and just want to give hands of the English, it's my fourth language, so sometimes I try to, you know, and, you know, pronounce, make correct pronunciations, but I just want to speak from my heart. And, you know, I was the first person in my family to ever graduate from high school. I went to high school. I graduated in 2018. I remember the first time when I walked in, when I walked into a North High School building, I saw a huge banner with a sign, a sign that said "Welcome" in my language, which made me feel very welcoming and very, I feel I belonged to this school. And I'm aware that, you know, with the current administration, with the DEI, and this could be a threat with DEI. And I just want to share that, seeing that signage when I walked inside the building, it makes me very proud and belonging. And I don't want you to, you know, we live in a very challenging time, and I want to urge you not to repeal this, repeal DEI policy at Akron Public School. If this policy is repealed, what does it mean? It's mean that we are basically repealing American fundamental values and promise. I want you to keep DEI at Akron Public School, and I know that this is very challenging for your positions, but I want to make sure that you are looking at the rest of our communities and the students and their families. I want you to, I urge you to protect DEI. And I also created this, I don't know how you call it, to describe North Hill at Akron. I came up with this vocabulary word to describe Akron. It's a diverse community. It's a home of immigrant refugees. We have a multicultural, we have so many good food, and it's a home to me. So I want you to protect DEI policy, and I want to thank you again, Madam President, for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. Now, I want you all to know that I am quite literate, but the handwriting here is in curve, and it's a little challenging for me, but this, I believe, says Michelle Seedon. Yes, Ms. Seedon, thank you. Ms. Seedon.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak with you, because I am, let me say it like this, out of terrible things come beautiful things. I feel like this is an opportunity for the Akron Public Schools to partner with Project Kit to give a voice to the silent victim. Before I started this campaign, I went to Amelia Sykes, her congressional representative, and I said, "What do you think about it? Is there a necessity for it?" Her office said, "Absolutely. Please do it." So I created this T-shirt to send a message. This T-shirt says on the back, "How to communicate when you are in danger." You can communicate to anybody without your being seen by the person who has harmed or is bullying you. This came out of a hurtful place. A five-year-old being assaulted for two years. Akron Public School, five-year-old being assaulted for two years, but no voice. And finally, at seven years old, she got her voice. When her mother passed away and she wanted to counseling, she got with a counselor and was able to tell him what was happening to her for the last two years. Two years is too long. There are hundreds of children, thousands of children, who suffer in silence. Our goal is to make communities aware that they encounter victims of abuse everywhere. They're on your jobs, in your schools, and even in your homes. These victims are not taught how to communicate that they need help, nor are we taught what to do when we recognize the victim. I want a platform in every school, in Akron Public School, to be able to teach this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seedon. Thank you very much. Next, the last name, I believe, is Reynolds. Reynolds, William Reynolds. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
So I broke my finger, and I'm left-handed. Your security guard wrote that, so you might want to talk to him about his writing. I'm William Reynolds, a father of five and a leader with the freedom of luck. We gather here today at a crossroads for our cities, our city and our children. The decision by Akron Public Schools to potentially repeal diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI initiatives is not just a bureaucratic change, it is a statement about the values we choose to uphold, the future we envision for our youth, and the legacy we leave behind. DEI was never about giving some students an unfair advantage over others. It was about recognizing the barriers that exist for many children, barriers rooted in race, economic status, and historical injustices, and ensuring that every student, regardless of their background, has the resources and opportunities to succeed. Repealing DEI sends a dangerous message that equity is expendable, that inclusion is optional, and that diversity is a burden rather than a strength. This decision echoes national movements that seek to dismantle progress in the name of so-called fairness. We see similar rhetoric from President Donald Trump, who actively is seeking to eliminate DEI programs at the federal level. His administrations painted these initiatives as divisive rather than acknowledging the systemic inequities that were designed to address. Now, Akron is following that same path, turning back the clock on the efforts that so many in our community have fought for. Furthermore, the recent Dear Colleague letter issued by the U.S. Department of Education underscores the importance of DEI initiatives in fostering equitable educational opportunities. The letter emphasizes the legal and moral obligations of schools to create inclusive environments that support all students, particularly those from historically marginalized communities. Ignoring this guidance not only undermines progress, but also risks legal and ethical repercussions. Let us be clear, this is not just about policy. This is about our scholars who will walk into classrooms tomorrow feeling unseen and unheard. It is about the educators who strive to create a learning environment where every child is valued, and it is about the message we send to the next generation. Do we embrace our differences as strengths, or do we retreat into paths where inequality was a norm? We must not be silent. We must challenge this decision, advocate for policies that uplift all students, and hold our leaders accountable. The future of Akron's children is too important to be sacrificed at the altar of political convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. That concludes our Board Community Reflections. Lastly, we have Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Anna Stevenson. Is Ms. Stevenson still here?
Hello, my name is Anna Stevenson, and I'm here to urge you to please stand against the federal push to roll back DEI initiatives. I'm not an Akron resident, however, many of my friends are graduates of the Akron Public School system, and I'm a public school graduate myself. I'm 23 years old, and I commonly find myself reminiscing about my 13 years in public school. Much of that time, I remember fondly, and those experiences shaped who I am today. Unfortunately, there are also many negative memories, memories of students being discriminatory and discriminated against, memories of targeted harassment and bullying. And unfortunately, what many of these memories have in common is that the students, the targets were marginalized students. Sometimes my friends were those targets, and sometimes it was me. One of the many aspects of DEI policy is that it seeks to hold people accountable for incidents like these. It seeks to ensure equitable treatment of all students, including students whose experiences have been historically and systemically devalued by society. The federal orders against DEI send a very pointed message to Black and Brown students, to gay and trans students, to disabled students, to students of immigrant families, to students experiencing poverty. It sends a message about whose experiences are most valuable, and it isn't theirs. As a college student, we have also been combating Ohio Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 6, which aim to stigmatize and silence the voices of marginalized people and controversial subjects in higher education. It would make it so professors would have to stay neutral on these controversial subjects like marriage equality, racial justice, and climate policy if they want to keep their jobs. So marginalized students are being told by their country and by their state that not only will their voices and experiences not be heard and protected in public primary schooling, but they will also not be heard in public higher education. The question then begs, where can they be heard and understood? Where can their experiences be considered important? As a society, we cannot ignore the societal, historical, economic, and physical barriers to success that exist. Not talking about or addressing them does not mean that they go away. It's how they fester. The answer to keeping all students safe is not to take away resources addressing the inequities that they face. I ask that you please do everything in your power to keep DEI policy in place and to follow through on those policies. Please be a source of local respite from the stigmatization that our government is placing on us as marginalized people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, all of our community members who came down and gave up your time today to share with us. Your input and your voices are valued and heard. Also, our committee meetings are open to the public as well. So when we convene and we meet, whether it's instructional policy, Ms. Seed, I'm thinking about your program, and I just was curious, is that something that possibly could get unfolded in instructional policy? What does that look like, or is that out of school time? But these are those deeper discussions that can happen at policy meetings. Also, the entire Board is available via email. If you email Board members, if you have specific questions or concerns that you would like to share or to expand upon, because we don't do like direct back and forth, I'm just making a statement to keep, no, it's no problem, but please email us, because many of the Board members, I feel very confident that whoever you email, they usually follow up. I definitely will follow up, and when I follow up, I add all of my colleagues so that they know the thread and what's being discussed. Additionally, Ms. LaCree and both Sue and Olivia, I would love to receive an email from you, sharing some of the things that you shared today, because it is very alarming and very concerning. And I'm at the point that I feel when we have these open meetings, the responses should be open, and what happened, the action steps should be too, to some degree. I know that there's privacy and things like that, but this is very simple, and we're talking about direct instruction and what we're doing about that, and as far as teachers, and the same with the programming. So again, I appreciate everyone who came out today. I appreciate your comments. And just like when we said with Zaya, we don't want it to be seen that your comments are falling on deaf ears. Dr. Akbar spoke with me before the meeting. He said, "Hey, Carla, did you see the framework?" I said, "Absolutely, I seen the framework." He said, "I just want to make sure." And so again, these are the things that collectively, a Board, because I'm one of seven, right, will go through and process and make determination. So again, your voices are heard and your voices are considered. Superintendent, report, please.
Thank you, President Jackson. Thank you, President Jackson. We acknowledge the loss of one of our employees, Mr. Terry, Ronnie Terry. He was a temporary custodial worker at Kraus ECLC, and we certainly want to keep the staff lifted and his family as well. The grants that I wanted to highlight tonight, thank you to Myers Tire Supply, who supplied ECLC with 680 boxes of disposable gloves to be used for our scholars performing shop and lab work in the automotive technology pathway. We also want to thank all of the businesses, individuals, and families who adopted students at Pfeiffer Elementary School for Christmas, providing them with 100, with hundreds of toys, I'm sorry, and other gift items. Want to say congratulations to our Chief of Staff, Ms. Angela Carter, for being selected as an honorary for the Leadership Akron's New Executive Leader Reception. This annual event celebrates the top decision-makers in our community who stepped into new roles in late 2023 or 2024. And so I want to say thank you. It was an honor myself to get it the year before, so I guess we're flowing in APS, but congratulations to her. Had an opportunity to meet with our parents and also our faith-based advisory committee meetings, which were absolutely wonderful meetings, great feedback from our families that we have been able to already put some of those things into play. Also, attending, attended the Bridging the Gap, a conversation on policing from a Black perspective, where four of our APS students also had the opportunity to be there, and one of them had the opportunity to actually share his views and perspectives. And it was an awesome community event. Looking forward to the next one that they'll be having coming up in a few months. Just a reminder to our families, didn't think we would need this as much, but thank you, thanks, I guess thankful to the, thanks to the Ohio weather. We've had to use it a lot. I was at church on yesterday, and one of our students said, "Thank you so much for the snow days. I really appreciate it." So, but that's not the real reason why we have those. But just to let our families know that we try, we really, really try to make those calls early as possible. Sometimes those calls are happening at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, trying to get the word out. But we have the news media outlets, website, text and robocalls, and we just want to make sure that your emergency information is updated so that we can make sure that you're getting those messages. Just a reminder that we have our Blueprint for Excellence, Strategic Plan Cornerstone Meetings. Those cornerstone meetings will be on Tuesday, which is to Those Cornerstone Meetings will be on Tuesday, which is tomorrow. We have one at 4:00, and at 5:00 for Cornerstone 2, which is around academic achievement. Cornerstone 1, which is a culture of safety and belonging. Also, Cornerstone 4, family partners and community engagement on the 25th as well, at 3:30, and again at 5:00. So if you miss one, you can catch the other one, you can catch all of them if you would like. And on Thursday, we have Cornerstone 3, which is Operational Excellence, which is at 3:30 and again at 5:00. But those are virtual, so some of our families like the virtual options, so those are virtual, so you can definitely tune into those as well. Our be kind for today. We're shining a light on Jason Ware, a dedicated member of our custodial staff at ECLC, whose kindness makes a lasting impact every day. At lunchtime, Mr. Ware goes above and beyond to support our middle school AIM students, making sure they feel seen, valued, and they're cared for. It's not unusual to hear students calling out Mr. Jason, greeting him with a big smile, laughter, and even a hug. The warmth in their interactions, the joy they share, and the scene of family they create makes kindness truly contagious at ECLC. And so we want to continue to keep celebrating and embracing these moments that strengthen our school community. And a special thank you to Dr. Nolan for sharing this story and for helping us with kindness and keeping it thriving. I want to also, at this time, sort of shift gears to refer to the DEI mandates that we've received. The reorganization and expense reduction roadmap designed to fulfill the district's five-year budget commitment and the strategic plan have been under development for the past eight weeks or so. And the framework, which we will be rolling out very shortly, is for a reduction and reorganization map that will keep us focused on what we presented at our Finance Committee Meeting on the 14th. Simultaneously, on February the 14th, 2025, the U.S. Department of Education issued guidance that included the use of diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI programs for K-12 schools and other educational institutions across the country, is what is called the Dear Colleague Letter. The guidance indicates that the use of DEI programming could constitute racial discrimination and violation of existing laws. The guidance also instructs schools to ensure that its policies comply with the interpretation of the law or risk losing federal funding. The guidance states that the Department of Education will take appropriate measures to assess compliance by February 28th, 2025. Here in APS, we receive $85 million in the federal funding, and that's for this year. That may vary from year to year. These funds are used for valuable programs to help students and within our district, such as Title I, Special Education, School Nutrition, After-School Activities, College Access Initiatives, driver Z, and also English as a Second Language, ESOL, sorry, we refer to it as EL here, sorry, and more. I want to be very emphatically clear that I am a indeed great supporter of the work that we do here. It was one of the things that drew me to our district. It is, it is, it is an important component that we certainly need. And we become cross between law or guide, our directives from Washington and what we want to protect for our kids. And so due to those unknowns related to this directive and risk associated with federal funding at this time, I do recommend to the board that we look into the process of rescinding those policies, taking those to the committee where we can further massage them and really delve into what we need to do in order to meet those obligations. This is a really tough place for us to be, and it's a very tough stance that we have to take. And so that would be Policies 226004, the Equity Policy, 226005, Working Definitions for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Excellence in Education, also 2260.07, Racial Equity Policy. This will also give us an opportunity to see the mandates that come and more guidance that we have not yet received. And as I talk with superintendents from across our state and across our nation, we're all sitting in a seat of great uncomfortability, but we want to do what's right for our scholars in our community, but we also know that we have looming above us these mandates that come from above in Washington. I understand that these are difficult conversations, and they're extremely uncomfortable for, for us to have to talk about. But I do want to ensure, reassure our community that this is not the end, that this is not final, that I want us to be able to have those conversations so that we can talk about and massage what this is going to look like for us. We don't know what tomorrow's directives may be, but we just know what we have today, and that we want to make sure that we are trying to do the best we can. We're trying to be in compliance, but also wanting to do what is right for our scholars and for our community and our school system. Our students and our employees and our community's needs will remain a top priority, and we are committed to ensuring that this is met. In order for us to do this, we must also maintain the funding, the necessary funding that we have. As we receive additional guidance from the government, and to date, it has only been the Dear Colleague Letter, and we're in communication with representatives through our state and our nation, and we're going to continue to work through these challenges and engage in ongoing conversations with our board. It is also, because people's lives are attached to this work, people's employment is attached to this work. And so one thing that I have learned is that we have a culture here that has existed for so many years where we lose some of our best and brightest employees, and we want to ensure that we maintain people here in APS. I was trying to, but time did not allow me to put together some of the great work that has been done through Dr. Chapman, so I will have the opportunity to take more time to be able to put it together, to highlight the work that was done there, along with Mrs. Alexander and Ms. Sidney as well. We want our community to know that we appreciate the work that they do. It is meaningful to us, and it's who we are as a district. It's our culture. It's, it's who we represent, who we are represented as. And so she is, they are our brightest, and we want to ensure that their excellence, their knowledge, their skill, that that remains here with us because we're committed to that work. And so, having said that, as we go through this tough time, we will continue to keep our community updated on the information as we get it. We will share that information with our community, with our staff, with our families. And we just simply want to say thank you to Dr. Chapman, to Ms. Alexander, to Ms. Sidney thus far for the work that has been done in our district, and we want to continue to keep moving our district forward in ways that every child is going to receive and will continue to receive a quality education in Akron Public Schools.
Thank you for that report, Superintendent. Is Diana Fido here? Are you, yeah, okay. What I would like, you can come up. At this point, Diana Fido is the Legal Counsel for the District, and I think at this point it would be appropriate if we have our Legal Counsel provide a summary of the recent, the Dear Colleague Letter, and the implications that it has for the district, just to add some additional insight on these policies that we're discussing that will later be referred back to committee.
Thank you, Board President Jackson. Diana Fido, my colleague Erin Ross here as well to speak to the board. The Board President had asked us to provide a very high-level overview of the recent guidance from the U.S. Department of Education relating to this February 14, 2025 Dear Colleague Letter that the Superintendent already spoke about, that's regarding the use of race and diversity, equity, inclusion in programming in schools. So this brief presentation is made for informational purposes and to provide some context for this matter and a discussion. It is not discussion on the merits of the issue, but informational based on the guidance that was released in this Dear Colleague. It is also not an exhaustive overview. We're not going to get into the legal weeds here. But we must start that since the beginning, the President, President Trump's administration, there have been significant action regarding diversity, equity, inclusion, programming, and other matters. But with respect to education, the most recent and very tailored guidance comes from the U.S. Department of Education through this Dear Colleague Letter. And so my colleague here will go ahead and walk the board through some of those key points of the letter, and then we'll go ahead and kind of give a landscape of where things are right now and turn it back over to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
President. So the U.S. Department of Education first issued this Dear Colleague Letter on February 14th of 2025. Dear Colleague Letter is really the way in which the U.S. Department of Education, and more specifically, the Office of Civil Rights, provides guidance on their interpretation of the law. So that's, that's what we get with this Dear Colleague Letter, their interpretation of the law. The letter kind of groups all different schools together in terms of their discussion of schools. So it includes elementary schools, secondary schools, post-secondary educational institutions, and preschools that receive federal financial assistance. The letter really explains and reiterates the legal requirements under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, as well as the Equal Protection Clause, and, yeah, thank you, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, and, and then other relevant authorities. So the letter finds that American educational institutions have discriminated against students on the basis of race by routinely using race as a factor in things such as admissions, financial aid, hiring, training, and other institutional programs. They group these, falling down here. The schools have advanced these discriminatory practices and justify these practices under the banner of diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. They really rely on a U.S. Supreme Court holding recently to justify this interpretation. And the letter indicates that if educational institutions treat a person of one race differently than it treats another person because of that person's race, the educational institution violates the law. The letter further stated that relying on non-racial information as a proxy for race and making decisions based on that information also violates the law. This is true even when, regardless of whether the proxies are used to grant preferences of an individual basis or a systematic one. The letter draws the conclusion that the federal law prohibits covered entities from using race in decisions pertaining to admissions, hiring, promotion, compensation, financial aid, scholarships, prizes, administrative support, discipline, housing, graduation ceremonies, and all aspects of student, academic, and campus life. The latter, the latter, excuse me, the letter specifically states that, put simply, educational institutions may neither separate or segregate students based on race nor distribute benefits or burden based on race. Although some programs may appear neutral on their face, the letter provides that a closer look reveals that they are, in fact, motivated by racial considerations, and race-based decision-making, no matter the form, remains impermissible. The department will no longer tolerate overt or covert racial discrimination, as they described. The letter specifically states, the law is clear, treating students differently on the basis of race to achieve nebulous goals such as diversity, racial balancing, social justice, or equity is illegal under controlling Supreme Court precedent. As Superintendent Robinson mentioned, the letter provides a date for which we need to come into compliance, and it's 14 days from the date of the Dear Colleague Letter, which puts it at February 28th of 2025. The letter advises that all educational institutions should ensure that their policies and actions comply with existing civil rights law. Cease all efforts to circumvent prohibitions on the use of race by relying, relying on proxies or other indirect means to accomplish such ends, and finally, cease all reliance on third-party contractors, clearinghouses, or aggregators that are being used by institutions in an effort to circumvent prohibited use of race.
In addition to the Dear Colleague Letter, there have been other executive orders related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and race-based programming. Those are separate from this guidance. This guidance is interpreting existing law and is telling educational institutions how the department would view that law. And if they are not in compliance, the risk would be to go after federal funding, among other legal action that is available. While there have been a stay on some executive orders related to these matters, there has been no challenge that we are aware of yet to the implementation of the Dear Colleague Letter that is the topic for discussion that we are having right now. It is, of course, possible that challenges will be filed. This is an evolving and ongoing process, but for right now, this is the interpretation of the U.S. Department of Education that does have control and say over some of the district's programming and federal funds. So at this time, the recommendation from the Superintendent would be to look at these policies, including up to a repeal. And so, you know, there are certainly various avenues, and that's what we're here for the board now to discuss. So thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you, we appreciate the insight. Excuse me, again, I invited our Legal Counsel to give the context of the separation of the executive orders of DEI and then the Dear Colleague Letter, which is referencing current law that it is alleging is being violated. I think the best, we'll discuss this in new business, but just the separation of those things, and that's why in order for this to be done with fidelity, the recommendation is to send it back to the Equity Committee, and we are on a timing frame, but so that it's clear to the community, the diff, excuse me, I apologize, the difference between the executive order and that the Dear Colleague Letter is citing current, current, current civil rights laws and alleging that this work, thank you, is violating that. Just for a point of clarity, as the discussions go forth, and I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of what the board was aware and presented with of this deadline of the 28th, and that we have all the facts to make. of the 28th, and that we have all the facts to make the decisions. And when it goes back to committee and Dr. Chapman, which I feel confident that the work will be able to happen, it's just how that's worked. So again, thank you to our legal counsel. And now we'll move forward with the president, I'm sorry, the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Robinson. Unfortunately, we had our last financial committee meeting that happened to hit on a day that really, truly disappointed our students. We had a snow day. So we also canceled our finance committee meeting. So there's just, but there are a few things that, that I would like to highlight. And before we move into this is finances is tied to all, everything that was discussed tonight is tied to finances. And doing the very best we can to manage these funds is critical in how we move forward, how we impact student learning, whether that's in preschool programs or any other classroom or DEI initiatives, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd like you to take a look at, which I've all handed out to you, and if we could pull that up. This is our January financial report. One of the things that is a bit challenging still at, well, not a bit challenging, very challenging at this point, is just the uncertainty about what funding's going to come, what funding isn't going to come. House Bill 96, which is the funding bill, would probably really surprise most people if you read through it, because it's dozens and dozens of pages that have absolutely no impact budgetarily, yet they're provisions inside of, baked inside of this document. You heard Member Autry mention inputs. So the Fair School Funding Act, which is in our five-year forecast, which is in everyone's five-year forecast, very much is in doubt as to how that's going to be phased in and what those percentages are going to look like, if they look like anything at all. So losing state funding clearly can impact us. We're not at a point to sit here and tell you that that's what's happening. What I'm here to tell you is, I simply don't, we simply don't know at this point what that's going to look like. That on top of what the discussion we just went through on federal funding, and you have a recipe for trying to determine the financial stability of any public school is in question right now. But where we're looking at right now, if you could go ahead and flip to revenue and cash balance, yeah, let's hold there for just a minute. So year-to-date revenue, so what you have before you is a summary as well as the document itself. But the year-to-date revenue, January reached about 189.1 million, which is, to put that in perspective, is about $1.9 million higher in revenue than we had last year. Anticipated that because of the passage of our levy. The cash balance is projected to be lower. The forecasted June 30 cash balance is around 80.65 million in reserves as compared to the prior year balance of 106.58 million dollars. So you might say, well, that's an unbalanced budget, and you would be absolutely correct. But it's impossible, over a long period of time, for public schools not to go into deficit spending. As we all know, it's House Bill 920, right? Freezing collections in perpetuity forever. So creates boom and bust cycles, and that's why public schools go into deficit spending. So we have projected that deficit spending. If you go on to our next slide, you can start to look at revenue breakdown, January collections into local taxes and reimbursements and revenue. Some of that's still not all in, so we can't account for exactly what that's going to look like. We collect tax, taxes from the auditor's office twice a year. And while the state revenue saw a modest increase, there was a slight decline in overall January collections. But I don't expect that to continue. I think more dollars will come in as we move forward, but with an overall increase of almost 2 million to date. If you move to expenditures, January expenditures totaled $32.96 million. Put that into perspective. They're almost $33 million a month. It's a lot of money to run a large organization like APS. We're over a $500 million a year budget, and roughly $3.79 million higher than in January. Again, that's actually, I'm pretty pleased with that number, actually, because if you take those numbers and you multiply them by inflationary increases, it would be way higher than that. Plus, you have steps and increases for, for staff members. All of that bakes, bakes into that. So I feel pretty good about where we sit in that regard. And most of that money comes from, which won't surprise you at all, is salary and benefits, purchased services, and other expenses. Some of those other expenses that we might not be used to seeing, which are going to impact our forecast, our COPS payments are now being made, and so is our debt on, on bond issues and, and other, and our other tax issue. Now, yes, we receive more money to make those payments, for sure, but you're seeing that show up as an expenditure. Year-to-date expenditures through January are 220 million, marking an increase of $15 million over the same time period a year ago, and with notable raises, a rising textbook costs, and then we're making interest payments as well. So those are all a piece of that. And then the forecast trend variance, and that's really what we really want to watch. How are we varying from what we projected we would be at? So revenue is on the plus side of about 1.42 million or 0.39% higher than what we anticipated, while expenditures are unfavorable at about 7.23 million or 1.9% over what we originally forecasted. So we are obviously in deficit spending, but we are not in a deficit. Does that make sense? We're spending more than we're taking in, surely, but we still have cash reserves that we're eating into at this point, holding at about $80 million at the end, at the end of the school year. Our district policy says that we must keep on hand 60 days of unencumbered cash reserves at all times. 60 days for us is a little over $60 million, 63, 64 million. So we'll still hit that threshold, but we're getting perilously close to falling below that as, as we move forward. And we know that it's critical that the reductions that we have, that the board has approved, that we continue to move through those reductions and make sure that we sustain those reductions or the forecast won't hold. Any questions about the monthly financial report?
No questions, no questions. Just if you could just, just expound a little bit on COPS so that the public would understand what, what that is all about.
Yes, ma'am.
And reductions.
Sure.
And where we are with that, I know that is in conjunction with the superintendent, perhaps he wants to jump in here, but I am concerned about our reserves. And I, the reserves are there for emergency and not for daily expenditures, but I'm hearing that that's what's happening here. And, and I'm having this conversation with you because we did not have a committee meeting, and normally we would talk about that. So if you could just a little bit, talk a little bit more about those, those areas. Thank you.
Sure. And I apologize. It's easy to get caught up in our own acronyms and forget that not everybody, we're not talking about the Akron Police Department. We're talking about COPS, our Certificates of Participation. It's a note that we took out, a low-interest loan that we took out, using our own district property as collateral for that low-interest loan. That's $42 million, which is the, the majority of the money that would be expended to build the Miller-South-Pfeiffer combination building on the Kenmore campus. So that's, that's what that's reflecting. And then the second piece of that, Mrs. Sykes, was, could you repeat that one more time? Reserves. So, so I will say this, and I know this is a very difficult concept for, for folks to really wrap their heads around, but I think everyone in this room would agree on the fact that no matter what we do, expenses will rise. I don't care how fiscally conservative we are, our expenses will rise. We're a service industry, so a little over 80% of everything we do is people. The other 20% is very difficult to cut. It's electricity, it's fuel, it's buses, it's repairing of buildings, et cetera, et cetera. There's not a lot, and negotiated agreements are going to drive the majority of that 80%. So there's really not a lot of wiggle room truly in a budget. There is, there is. We need to be fiscally conservative. We need to be cautious about where we move those dollars. Do we move them over to this side of the House or this side of the House? There's a lot of different ways to move those dollars around. I'm not arguing that. But I am arguing that those, those costs for personnel include administration, stat teachers, custodians, it's, it's everyone, and we all contribute to that. But House Bill 920 says that, and it's codified in the Ohio Revised Code, or in the Ohio Constitution, that revenue, when you pass a levy, that dollar amount that you pass and receive tho, those dollar amount can never go up. It always stays frozen in time. So I would, I would say it's much like if I said to you, you could, you're, you could get a job for $25 an hour. You might say, okay, that's okay, I can do that. But what if you made $25 an hour five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now? You wouldn't be able to make ends meet, right? Well, that's exactly what happens to schools. We're frozen at House Bill 920. We pass a levy like we just did. We bring in more revenue than we actually need right now to try to build our cash reserves, knowing that we're going to go eat into those cash reserves at some point when that axis of, of expenses crosses over that flat line of revenue. So very, very difficult not to, at some point, move into deficit spending. But what we cannot do legally is run a deficit. We cannot, we cannot sit here and report that we're minus $26 million in our holdings, that you cannot do that. We would go into state receivership, et cetera, et cetera. And we are walking a very fine line, considering the fact that we just passed a levy, and we still are needing to make reductions. And so that puts us in a different position, coupled with, I don't know, I'm not confident in the sustainability of the numbers that we've put in here, no, no fault of our own, and knowing what's going to come from the state in terms of our state funding.
I have a question. So the, the money that you said we're spending money and we are going to a deficit, the cash reserve, we're not going to have to go into that cash reserve, are we? Because I know that cash reserve was, policy was put there so that we can, if something happens, an emergency, it's like Sister Sykes said, that if we go into an emergency, that we have that money so the district can function for at least three months. If not, then, if we don't have that reserve, then we can't run a district and teachers can't be here, nobody can be here to teach the kids, and so we lose out. So we're not going to be getting into that, those finances, are we?
Unfortunately, the answer is yes. So we're, we're sitting at, it started the school year at roughly $106 million above in cash reserves, unencumbered cash reserves, no, nothing drawing that $106 million out. But our axis has been crossing, and we're, we're, we're across that. So we're eating into our cash reserves by a little over $20 million. And that, and that what, what, what this finance report tells you is that we're doing it a little bit faster than we anticipated, $7 million faster than we anticipated, which is 1.9%. So that's what it is telling you. So it is critical that, as we move forward, that we do everything we can to make sure we enact the reductions that we said we were going to. We hold to that. And, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Robinson to talk about the steps that are, he, he mentioned it a little bit earlier about plans moving forward. But those, those reductions have to be made. And if we get below $60 million in cash reserves, then we know, if we get there, we know that you either have a choice of being on the ballot for additional funds, which is not popular, or making further reductions in expenditures. And that's, it's that simple. Dr. Robinson, you want to talk about the reductions, the 10 million?
Thank you. So Ms., board members, Mrs. Sykes, board members, we are finalizing the presentation on, on that to present to the Finance Committee. I think, I don't think I know you'll be a little happy, because we have a little bit more than what we said we would do when the five-year forecast was done. But we do know, on the flip side of that, the unhappy side of that, is that we know we're going to have to continue to do additional reductions even into the, the next year. So we, we're aware of that. And so we're, as we're doing what we're doing, we're looking at the entire district and ensuring that we're making reductions in the right places. There are places where we do need additional support. So as we're doing all of that, we're making sure that those opportunities are going to be provided for the additional support, but also to make sure that we're meeting the obligation that we have before us, and that is the 10.2%, I mean, entire million dollars that we have to reduce. But those, those will be reduced. I mean, those reductions will be done, I'm sorry. But we were able to do a little bit more than that as well, but we just don't know exactly how much that overreach is going to be on the positive side. But the, again, we know that we're still going to have to do even further reductions just for that very same reason, looking at the cash reserves and slowing down some of the unfortunate bleeding, financial bleeding, if you will.
The second piece that I'd like to bring to your attention is, you'll see on 6.1, what is the rationale for the bond issuance resolution? Ohio law requires that public schools pass, or public school boards pass resolutions authorizing the issuance, or sale of bonds to ensure that borrowing for capital projects, which of course we did. And they, it could be for construction, renovation, all those things, improvements, and that it's undertaken in a transparent, accountable, and legally compliant manner. In the essence, the resolution must do a few things. Formally document the need and purpose, which this document does. This particular dollars that we're talking about is not the Kenmore project, but rather the North High School project. It has to specify financial terms, and such as total bond amount, which of course it does, anticipated interest rates, et cetera, et cetera, which are all included. And then obviously, we need to safeguard public funds, and the resolution acts as a formal check, ensuring that funds will only be borrowed for what is clearly defined. So it is very, in our office, in the Finance Department office, we have to do a very tight job of tracking the bonds and making sure those dollars are the dollars that go to North and North Contractors and not using, letting the Certificates of Participation or dollars for Kenmore to cross those things. Those things cannot cross. One's for one, and one is for another, and will obviously be audited. These requirements are set forth in the Ohio Revised Code 11.18, and are designed to protect taxpayers by ensuring school districts engage in responsible fiscal planning before incurring debt. And by passing this resolution, the school board not only complies with statutory mandates, but also upholds the principles of transparency, accountability, and managing community resources.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve the resolution of the bond issuance?
Hi, thanks. Sorry, I had my hand up before. I don't think anyone sees me down here. I have questions about the financial report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. So it says that our expenditure trend, on page six, our expenditure trade is $7 million unfavorable compared to the forecast.
Right.
So that's our trend right now. And I know we were talking about dipping into the cash reserves and that. Page five, I don't know if you have that or anything, but page five really stood out to me, because as we're talking about, and I heard the superintendent saying that we're having a plan for reductions, or we're going to hear about reductions soon, on the top here, is this saying that not only have we not started the reductions yet, but we're actually spending more? Not only haven't reduced yet, but it says expenses for the month were up $3 million? And then, I was wondering if someone could expand on, I'm just reading in the little box. Higher classified regular salaries of $1 million and higher interest are the actual expenses. So is this saying, what I'm reading from this, and tell me if this is right, that we're not only have not started reducing the salaries that we planned to reduce in January, but we're actually spending on top of that? Is that what this is saying?
Well, let me clarify. What you're looking at is, and it gets, it can be very confusing, because you'll go from comparing year to year over and comparing numbers to the five-year forecast. So what you're looking at right now is year over year. So the fact that salaries benefits went up roughly 1.2 million from the previous month was to be expected, because you've got steps, pay increases, about a 7% increase in healthcare coverage, all of those things are, that's just normal day, that's just normal operating. What you see when you hit the $7 million number, when you compare to the five-year forecast, that's offset some by a little over $2 million more in revenue than we anticipated. So, but that is, that number tells you that compared to our five-year forecast, we're eating into our cash reserves at a faster clip than we anticipated.
So then, in what's on the screen now, this was all budgeted for?
Well, it's, yeah, yeah. Staff's all budgeted for, unless, the only way staff isn't budgeted for is if something after the October, after the October, you voting on appropriations for October, the final appropriations in October, anything after that, if it were added new, then no, it wouldn't be budgeted for. But if it's replacing something, then it's, it would be budgeted for. So what we do is we take all our staffing, we know what the pay increases are, we know what the steps are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, we bake that into the five-year forecast.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions before we move to the motion for the Treasurer? All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution of the bond issuance?
So move.
Thank you. It was moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Member Sykes and properly seconded by Member Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the January 2025 financial report?
So move.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Vice President Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Roll call, vote please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Yes. With your frog. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We would now have the President's report, my report. I would like to take a moment to congratulate and to recognize David Hill Community Learning Center and Akron Online for their remarkable achievement, being released from additional target support and improvement. Thank you, Jennifer Penlay. At our last board meeting, I had highlighted, I promise, and at that time, I was not aware that David Hill also was taken off of that list, as well as our Akron Online. And so I definitely want to take this time to highlight these additional successes, and I want to give honor to their hard work and dedication that led to this milestone. Again, the progress made by these schools is a testament of the district's commitment to academic excellence, particularly in literacy. A significant factor in this success has been the adoption of a science of reading curriculum three years ago. The structured phonics-based approach aligns with brain science and provides students with explicit instruction on how to read effectively. Additionally, the district required all early literacy teachers to complete a rigorous 60-hour letters training over the course of a year to deepen their understanding of the science of reading and its application in the classroom. While this requirement exceeded the state minimum and was met with some concerns regarding workload, the investment has yielded meaningful improvements in early literacy outcomes. As we approach the end of Black History Month, I would like to take a moment to highlight a significant local figure in Akron's history. Christine Fowler-Mack, the first African-American woman to serve as superintendent of Akron Public Schools. As we celebrate the ongoing success of our schools and the impact of the letters training, I find it fit to acknowledge that the superintendent Fowler-Mack was instrumental in bringing this training to our district. I also want to reflect on the important initiative led by Superintendent Christine Fowler-Mack during her tenure. Under her leadership, the district made significant strides, including conducting safety assessments, increasing security staff, introducing the concept of student services, and focusing on achievement, student opportunities, and engagement in middle schools. She also prioritized the creation of building-based achievement plans based on data reviews, something as I came to understand was not previously occurring, along with strategic facilities planning. These efforts have laid the foundation for the positive developments we are seeing today. A special thanks to all of our staff for their leadership in advancing literacy initiatives, and to all of the dedicated teachers, and I mean dedicated teachers. The amount of their workloads, it was rigorous, but now they are bearing the fruits of their hard work. And also, a special thanks to our instructional staff across the district. Your commitment to our students' success is truly making a difference, and we deeply appreciate your hard work and dedication. However, while we celebrate this achievement, we also recognize that there is still work to be done. It is my belief that by carefully reviewing best practices and the successful models that have led to this progress, we can continue building on these efforts to ensure that more of our schools not only exit this status, but also remain on a path of sustained improvement. By learning from what has worked and reinforcing our commitment to excellence, by listening to the teachers as they describe what's best practices and the professional development that they need, we can continue to drive meaningful, lasting change for all of our students. Once again, congratulations to David Hill CLC, to all of the teaching staff and the building administrator, to Akron Online, and I promise on this well-earned recognition. And thank you to everyone who continues to uplift and support our schools and our learners. Last board meeting, we had a parent that approached us to address some concerns which were viewed. At public schools, we deeply do value the well-being of our students, and as that parent spoke, I was overwhelmed with true concern, and I was glad to see that our central office staff went to follow up with that parent. I additionally followed up with the superintendent, as I was interested and concerned at what measures were taken to help us to support this parent. We recognize that situations involving student safety and care can be deeply emotional, and we remain committed to addressing concerns with compassion, transparency, and collaboration, which is why I'm sharing this with you on today. In response to that parent's concerns, our team engaged in multiple conversations to understand her perspective, review the incident, and ensure that appropriate protocols were followed to protect all students. We understand that witnessing a difficult moment involving a child in distress can be upsetting, and we have taken steps to provide additional support and training for staff to reinforce best practices in student care. To ensure a supportive learning environment, as I understand, the district has worked with this parent to explore several alternative school placement options, because those of you who are present remember the parent did not feel safe at that time for her child to attend one of our schools. While the options were not selected at that time, we do remain committed to continue dialogue and collaboration in identifying a solution that aligns with her expectation. Our goal is always to foster a safe, inclusive, and supportive educational experience for every child. We appreciate this parent's dedication. As a parent, and we remain open to ongoing conversations to ensure best possible outcomes, we cannot say that we want to be transparent, or we want to hear from the community, and not publicly address the concerns, because you, the community, want to know what is the board's response, what is central office doing. We had two educators share with us that we are not getting clarity and all things are not transparent. As I've stated before I took this seat, transparency is very important, and it is important that we do what we say we're going to do when we say we're going to do it, and that we work collectively together to move the district forward. In regards to this DEI policy changes, we still stay committed to serving all. As we navigate the evolving legal landscape regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, our district remains steadfast in its commitment to serving all students, including those from diverse cultural backgrounds and those with varied learning abilities. While these recent federal directors require adjustments to certain DEI programs, our core mission of ensuring access to high-quality education for every student remains unchanged. It is my hope that the district will continue to evolve in its commitment to meeting the diverse needs of all students, ensuring that every child has access to supportive learning environments. While previous policies have played a key role in promoting accountability for all students, this is what equity policies were sought to do. I believe the district, working together, will still move forward in a spirit of excellence to maintain that our students are served with differentiated instructional practices that can address each needs of our learners. As a district, again, we are fully committed to educational practice that uphold both federal legal requirements and our moral responsibility to serve all students effectively. While we adapt to these policy changes, we remain unwavering in our focus to serve all learners. Together, we will continue to provide a rigorous, inclusive, and student-centered education that empowers every learner to achieve their full potential. And this concludes the President's report. Next, we will have committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
Thank you, Madam President. We have for this evening, for a second reading prior to approval, policies 5511, dress and grooming, policy 5511.01, school uniforms for grades, grade kindergarten to eighth grade. This is the first, I'm sorry, the second reading for these policies. We will have a further, ask for further approval in future meetings. We also did not have a legal committee meeting due to the cancellation of our last meeting, therefore, we have rescheduled it for this Wednesday, February the 26th, at 4:30 here in the boardroom. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Next, we'll have a readout of finance and capital management.
Thank you, Madam President. So we also had to cancel because of weather, so the finance committee right now is subject to call.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Next, instructional policy and student achievement.
Thank you, Madam President. There is no report at this time. Our next meeting is scheduled for a week from today, Monday, March 3rd, at 4:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you, Member Autry. Next, equity committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing to report out. Our next meeting will be March 3rd at 4, I'm sorry, at 5:30.
Thank you, Member Hall. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of our previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes for February the 10th, 2025?
I move to approve the February 10th, 2025, meeting minutes.
It's been moved by Member Autry. Is there a second?
I'll second the meeting.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Treasurer, roll call, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Next is our personnel recommendations from Dr. Robinson.
We're in Section 10. Are there any questions regarding Section 10.1?
Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, and I might ask this probably all the time, but with all these different retirements and resignations, how quickly are we with putting these teachers back in place? So when someone resigns, how quickly are we to replace that teacher back in that school?
It depends. I mean, if we have a pool of teachers, which is not always the case, we're able to fill those positions immediately. But if we don't have a teacher who's applied, and depending upon if we knew about it early enough, we can post it early, so that hopefully someone does apply and you have kind of an even exchange, but that's not always going to be the case. So it's not that we don't fill them, and sometimes we're not able to always fill. It depends on what the teaching assignment is, and that's not just elementary, but I'm talking K-12.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question. Do we have a pool of teachers waiting?
No.
We do not? Okay. Thank you.
Member Harrison?
Yes, I have a question on, and if I could, do 10-3.
Yes, I have a question on, and if I could, do 10-3 and 10-4. It's the same, basically the same question. So, listening to the finance report, listening to staffing, it seems like, are we adding positions to reduce positions? Are we, 10-3, is that a new position? And I see the funding is general fund and Title IV. Is that a new position?
So, yes, in one instance, that is. But we also have to move... Yeah, you can come. But we also have to move money from Title IV into, we would have to take it off of the federal dollars and move it into general fund.
Point of order.
Yes, please.
So as I said at the beginning of this meeting, if this has anything to do with DEI, then Pastor Harrison should not ask about this at all. Okay? So, and if this does, then this also, it's my understanding that you were moving this all the way to new business? Yes.
Yes, Member Sykes, you are absolutely correct. Is this personnel, is this because in the, thank you for the point of clarification and point of order, and now I'm going into point of clarification. Because, Miss Superintendent, Dr. Robinson, to Member Sykes' point, this job description of talent coordinator, is this somehow involved with the current DEI work?
Not currently, no.
Is this the renaming of a position from?
No, it's not. This would be a new position. But it would be offsetted by someone who would be filling that. So it's not costing us more.
Okay, yeah. I think, I am going to have to recommend this because the question is, we're not going to say, you know, but, okay, yes. So I'm going to recommend this be, I want to make a motion that 10.3 also be moved to new business.
10.3 and 4.
10.3, thank you, Member Molinar. 10.3 and 10.4, I make a motion that 10.3 and 10.4 also be moved to new business. And the reason for, the rationale for this change, for those watching at home who are curious, is because all of the items dealing with the equity work and what entitles with equity, job descriptions, and things of that nature, as we discussed earlier in the meeting, there are three board members that should not be weighing in, discussing it, or voting on it. We are choosing to move these things back to committee so that they can be an audit, an equity audit on our policies, on the positioning, that it can be done with fidelity, that we make changes while we still follow the laws, and also do what's best organizationally. So again, that is the motion to move both 10.3 and 10.4 to new business. And I make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. You can second.
It's been seconded by Member Sykes. She's hard to say, y'all, from any ethical violations here, all of us, so.
Second.
Yes, Member Sykes, thank you. It's been seconded by Member Sykes. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstain.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Abstain.
Reverend Harrison? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0 with three abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Section 11. Any questions? 11.1.
Thank you, Member Sykes. I'm going to reintroduce my question for 11-1. The replacement positions. Are those currently filled? How long have these positions been?
So this is with our tech services. So with the tech services support specialist, these individuals are hired through temp agency. And after so many days, then we hire them in. And so, it's a replacement as it relates to the person that was hired through the temp agency was filling in for someone. But that's the way we do our TSS positions. They go through a temp agency first for a probationary period, and then if they're working out, then we hire them in. So he was at his number of days working with the temp agency, so now we're hiring him in to be our employee. And then with the human capital specialist position, that is a replacement for someone that resigned last month.
Okay, so, are these positions in the budget? Have we budgeted for these positions?
Yes, this is a replacement.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Superintendent?
Okay. 11-2. Three, 11-3. 11-4. Section 12. 12-1. 12-2.
Got to slow down.
Member Harrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam President. The supplemental contracts. I know, unfortunately, we read articles, we read an article in the paper, that was the first time I had ever seen that, and it dealt with supplemental contracts. I know I had brought it up at a previous meeting, not that particular incident or whatever they were addressing there. I didn't bring that up, but I brought up supplemental contracts. Do we have a system in place now where we are looking at supplemental contracts, making sure that the work is being done, making sure that we're not doubling up contracts? That was the question that I was trying to ask before, and I'm not sure that I got a clear answer on that.
So, we do have a system in place that has seemingly been working, that we are able to monitor and keep track of these supplemental contracts. We also did some modifications from last year to this year in terms of the number of supplemental contracts. But a lot of this stuff is, not all of it, but some of it is embedded within the contract. So we have to abide by that contract as it relates to those things, and making sure that we're meeting the obligation of the contract. But we do monitor to ensure that people are doing, and there are some cases where people are not following through and doing what they say they were going to do, and we do address that as well. We do rescind them.
Just as a follow-up, so I think that my wording that I want to use is, have we established clear standard operating procedures for these supplemental contracts to ensure, as it's been written, written in the papers, the things that have been seen as far as taking place, for clarity? I know that, you know, I'll follow up with you all if I have additional questions, and this is going to be one of those additional questions. I know that I had questions about various policies that will help negate some of that when we're looking at supplemental contracts and how they're issued. It was a question that came to me about nepotism, and I understand that that is revisiting, is in policy and supposed to go to policy to be revisited. And so I'm just curious, when we make these statements, as Member Harrison, just if it's something and it works, that's fine, but I just, for me, as an individual, it's just easier for me if I can see a procedure and know how it goes and can read it, because then it can be consistent all the time when we're talking about how we issue these contracts and how are we mitigating the risk of people who take these contracts and maybe never had, was at a wrestling match, or, you know, things of that nature. What is the accountability practices?
Correct. So we do have a procedure in place, how the contracts are established. And then one thing that we have been talking about in human capital is just making sure that we're providing supports to the building managers, the building administrators, as it relates to, how do you follow up to make sure that the work that is supposed to be happening with the contract is happening? Or that if you are over a certain club, that you actually have students in that club? Or if you are a crossing guard, that you actually have students out there, or crossing guard supplemental, you make sure that you have students out there actually doing, you know, doing the work? So we know that on our side, that we want to make sure that we provide the administrators with the support they need in order to execute the directives and the expectations regarding those that want to pick up supplemental contracts. And so, it's ongoing, so we're in education, so we're always revisiting things. So in light of, like you said, some of our recent things that have been happening, we are revisiting the process with principals as it relates to making sure the expectations are in place for anyone that picks up a supplemental contract. So we will constantly revisit and provide ongoing PD and support to principals to make sure that they're monitoring these contracts and know how to deal with it if it's not happening.
Okay, thank you for this. So how would I, if I, if an audit was done? Like, for instance, if someone comes into my building and they say they're substitute, if you didn't sign that log, you didn't substitute, you're not getting paid.
Correct. So there should be rosters in place regarding who's on the team or who's in the club. There should be attendance records and things like that. And so those are some of the things that we're working with principals on to make sure that these things are in place. And so like I said, it's something that we have to revisit and keep it on an ongoing cycle.
But see, those are the examples that we need. Because when you're saying attendance and things that are measurable, I can look at and see that. And just saying we're doing ongoing evaluation, that leaves, that's too evasive when you have concrete things that you're doing that can be measured. So that's why I wanted to ask the question, to be sure what actually was being done. Thank you, Member Hall.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like we did in our Equity Committee with all of the funding that goes to all the schools, like far as athletics and things like that, looking at how much money is coming out of the general fund, the donations, and so forth. I'm curious to see if maybe in one of our committees, either Equity or Instructional Policy, Student Achievement, if we could have a breakdown of who are coaches, or really it would be more the coaches. What am I trying to say? Who are the coaches for all of these sports? Because I understand, and I've heard, you know, from students and community members, that sometimes you'll have a teacher that is the wrestling coach, the track coach, the cheerleading coach, all of these things. How are these kids really being served with one person doing all of this? And then does this person, I'm not just saying teacher, I'll just say person, does this person have these skills to be a cheerleading coach or to be a wrestling coach? So I'm curious to see how many sports or how many activities one person has. Okay, we could pull a report. Okay. Okay. Which committee would you put that in? You could put it in the, I don't know, Finance Committee, since it's dealing with funds? No, not really dealing with funds. I just want to see, just like I said when we did with the high school athletics, just to see a breakdown of what's going to these schools, and I was in the Equity Committee. Diana, you were on that committee with me last year, right? Just to see a full breakdown of how many people are over one, I mean, multiple sports.
I think she can just get a print. Does that have to go to a committee?
No, I could just.
Or it could be a printout. Yeah, I think you can.
Share the report.
Yeah. And then she can get it in real time and doesn't have to wait for it to come through.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
You'll need a charger. Here.
Technology issues, have to get some.
Section 13. 13-1. Two. Section 14.
I'm sorry, my apologies, Superintendent. I do have, just a quick question about the, these 13.2 substitute teachers general fund. I see a lot of, just even with the regular teacher substitute resignations, retirement. My only question is, do we have any, like a pool of substitute teachers that may be trying to get their credential to become actual teachers? It's like the Grow Your Own program? I'm just using that term. But I just threw that out there, I'm just going to say it. But where we have, because we're, it seems like the shortage, we have these, we heard the educator speak earlier about the pre-K, preschool, I'm sorry, I say pre-K. But I'm just curious, do we have like a pool, something that's sustainable that maybe we can?
Well, there is a process for our substitute teachers who hold bachelor's degrees to go for their alternative resident educator licensure. And so we are in contact and communication with subs as relates to how to go about that process if they're interested in becoming a licensed teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Section 14. One. Two. Three. Section 15. Section 16. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Section 17. Section 18. Section 19. Section 20. No students. President Jackson, we have moved 10.3 and 10.4 to new business outside of that. I'm recommending for approval of the personnel recommendations presented in categories 10 through 21. Thank you.
It's been moved, it's been motioned by the Superintendent to approve the personnel recommendations through category 21. Is there a second? With the exception, I'm sorry, with the removal of 10.3 and 10.4, which was moved to new business.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Member Molinar?
Hi, sorry. I heard section 20, and there was no one in 20, but I did not hear 21-1. Can someone please explain the MOU in 21-1? I didn't, I would have spoken up when it was said, I didn't hear it. I think we moved quickly.
No, 21-1 is the resolution.
That's resolutions. That's in another section.
You just said 10 through 21. So 21 is part of 21.
Oh, sorry about that. Didn't realize that was part of personnel. Yes.
Right, I did say that.
Yes, what about it?
No, she.
I'm sorry. Monar.
Yes, can you please tell me about it?
So section, oh, let me get my glasses. So section twenty-one is regarding an MOU where we worked with this particular union to look at the hiring process separate from the traditional civil service process that we usually go through due to the high needs of our district. It usually takes a long time to get a list. And so both the labor and management are requesting that the board supports the resolution presented today so that we can make sure that we can move swiftly with filling these positions that fall with under this, this particular union. And so we did this, we did this previously, I can't remember, was it like last year, where we were stuck where we weren't getting lists and we need to be able to fill some high needs positions as relates to building secretary positions and payroll positions.
Just one second. Member Monar, if, did you want, did you have a follow-up? The Treasurer is here saying that he can add additional clarity if needed because it's in his department, if that would be helpful. Ms. Carter?
Oh, sure. You can add on. There is a high need for us to be able to fill these positions and just this whole civil service process slows it down. And so this is why the union is actually working with us as well in order to make sure that we get these positions filled.
The Superintendent, in his monthly meeting that I was in, sitting with, this was discussing your meeting with the Superintendent on Friday, right?
Yeah, I had a question and then no one had an answer, so.
Go ahead.
Information's great, thanks.
I was clear on the explanation, but go ahead, Treasurer.
Well, first, I'd want to thank HC on this for working with us. So this particular individual is in the Finance Office in the Payroll Department. And how it works is only certain positions, but payroll's one of them, finance is one of them. The person has to apply to civil service. We have a temp in there who's awesome. She's great and we want to keep her. But she's running at a lower dollar amount with no benefits. So how it would, if we went without the HC working with us and without the union's cooperation, she, we would have lost her because she would have had to, she has a family, she's got to get some coverage. But she would normally have to apply to civil service. We'd have to wait through that entire process, could take six months before they issue a list and a test. If there's ten or more, they have to take a test. If there's not, we don't have to. And then we could interview her when she's been working for us for months. So I'm grateful to both the union and HC for working with us to make sure we didn't lose a good employee. And we're already down one person in payroll. And usually, people get the most upset about two things, their children and their money. So he deals with the children part, I deal with the money part. So I'd like to not have them be upset.
Yes, Member Monar?
Thank you. This is very interesting. One of the questions I had on Friday that I did not understand, so is this something that is renewed annually or is this on a person-by-person individual basis? Or what kind of MOU is this?
So this will take us to the end of the school year. And if, in fact, this is something we wanted to do again, we'd have to come back to bring it to the board. But it would be up until the end of this fiscal year.
I guess my question, is it, would it only apply to this individual or is it something?
No, it's for the, anybody, it's for all positions that fall with under this group.
Are you clear? Did you have a follow-up? Okay. Every time I do this thing, we have to go back to the, the motion to approve the personnel. Is there a second? We were at the second. Okay, it's been moved and properly second, thank you. It was been moved and properly second by, who was it moved by? It was moved by the Superintendent and second by Alexander, excuse me. The discussion has been had.
The Superintendent can't move.
I'm sorry.
I mean, the motion was, every time we get in discussion, I find myself, that's us looking at Monar like, ooh, help me out. All right, so is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations? Sykes, did you make the motion, Sykes? I did, but I will. Thank you, I appreciate you so much. Sykes has made the motion. Now it's been seconded by Alexander. I thank you all for your patience. We've had discussion. Member Monar, is there any additional discussion or unreadiness? If not, roll call vote, please. Thank you all.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Next is the Board Letters and Consent Agenda. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Jackson. I wish to recommend the approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category And that would encompass twenty-two, twenty...
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Autry. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote, please. Dr. Thompson?
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-oh.
Thank you. Next, we would have Business Affairs Recommendation. There are no items currently at this meeting. Unfinished business, there is none, but however, there is new business. At the beginning of the meeting, Board Policy twenty-two-six-zero-point-zero-four, Equity Policy, Board Policy twenty-two-six-zero-point-zero-five, Working Definitions for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Excellence in Education, and Board Policy twenty-two-six-zero-point-zero-seven, Racial Equity Policy, as well as Agenda Items ten point three and ten point four, were moved to new business. I move that these items are referred back to the Equity Committee for further discussion and clarity. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by President Jackson, seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing and hearing, none. There is a need for us to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-two-one-two-two-G-one to consider the employment dismissal and discipline and/or discipline of public employees and/or officials. Is there a motion to go in?
We need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the move, I'm sorry. It's been moved and properly seconded, roll call, please. As far as the movement, it was, it was, it was, seconded by, it was moved by President Jackson, seconded by Member Sykes. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison? Ms. Hall? Ms. Autry?
I'm sorry, I do have a question that I should have brought up during discussion. I know the motion was to move this to Equity Committee. So I'm assuming at some point it would come to Legal Policy Committee? Is it going to be going back and forth between those committees?
At this point, it probably will be necessary, but the recommendation that's on the floor is that it go to the Equity Committee. And then to make sure that we are staying in line with federal laws and regulation, it will eventually have to probably move to Legal. But the desire of me making this recommendation is to really unpack those, those policies, the job descriptions in a way with fidelity, that we have some type of framework. We are working on a time. We know the twentieth is the time, so it's very likely that a committee, Member Monar, you'll be serving as the Chair for Equity so that we will have to give the proper notice more likely than not when we come out of this session as far as when the next meeting will be held so that the business can go forth as far as the deadlines that we're working on to really mitigate and discuss all of that. So to answer your question, Member Autry, yeah, at some point it would have to, as far as the reworking of it, as far as the policy, especially if the name of the committee, which has to be worked to. This is just Carla Jackson, in my opinion, who's not a lawyer. It's what I'm just sending it to Equity. Okay. Is that, I'm sorry, I was going to say, Madam President, Member Autry, I don't have anything else to elaborate on that. Is there any other discussion?
We still need to finish the vote.
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I'm sorry, abstain.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
And Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Motion carries four-oh with three abstentions.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Now, there is a need to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-two-one-point-two-two-G-one to consider the employment dismissal and discipline of a public employee and/or official. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Autry. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
All right, so we have been going into executive session for least December meeting and we've had special meetings. And so this is a serious business when we take our business, the business of the people outside of their view and have executive sessions. Now, I'm not saying that these subjects are not worth executive sessions, but I am saying that for us to constantly go into executive session, dealing with the public monies and public business, because we are a public body, that I am very concerned and I would hope that as we vote to go into executive session, which I am going to vote no, that we will be very conscious of the time that we spend in executive session and as we go forward, that we try to eliminate the need for executive sessions.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes. I'm not in complete disagreement with that. I do, as I understood it, is certain matters, personal matters and individuals which cause us to go, but I don't.
Madam President?
Yes.
Exactly, it is, it is. But still, it remains whether or not, everything that we go into executive session, if there's a need, is per one-two-one-point-two-two in those six items. And so my concern, and I have been in every executive session, is that whether or not we, as a board, if this, if we have to go into public's executive session month after month after month, then we are in a state of emergency. And perhaps we need to think about something else. And this district, and what we are saying to the public as we find ourselves constantly going into executive session. As a voter and a taxpayer, I'm tired of it. I'm concerned about it. And I would ask this board if we could really think about what this means and how this looks. And whether or not we are doing what the voters expect us to do as we take their business outside of their view. Because this is serious. Three solid months at least of executive sessions, for hours. Something is not working right here. That's what I'm saying. And I do not deny that you're using the right session, section. But I am concerned about how long we expect to do this and how long we expect the public to put up with this.
Thank you for sharing, I, Member Sykes. I'm not sure how long we're going to do it. It depends, I guess, what the Ohio Revised Code says concerning employment. Each time that I've been in executive session, and I do agree with the time that things can happen with more fidelity, but we're dealing with employee, employment issues and specific issues concerning those employees that I don't think is the proper form in a public meeting, nor do I, I'm not sure that we are at liberty to discuss it. As I've stated, I'm fine with transparency. And if we are, then this board, as I'm one of seven, as is each of us, if we discuss that and we can have clarity moving forward, I'm not in disagreement that less executive sessions will be appropriate. But the discussions that, since we've been on, habitually continuously have dealt with employment. So just like with any organization, we are dealing with employment. We can look at different, we have two employees and management styles, so I'm not sure. But for this moment, and we're going into executive session, your concerns have been heard, the members of the board can discuss that, we can seek Legal to get clarity moving forward as to what things we would discuss openly, as I think we had some insight on in our previous meeting, and we can move forward that way. And as for now, I believe, are we at calling for the vote for executive session?
Madam President?
Yes.
One other statement. If, in fact, we are going to do this, and I think that at the very least, when we come out, we should have more to say to the public about the business that we are conducting outside of public eye.
Agreed.
And I think that that would be fair for them and for us, and we can do that.
Absolutely. Not in disagreement with that. Is there anything else? Okay.
We've got it, we're ready to take the vote.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Monar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
No.
Motion carries six-one. Eight-thirty-four.
We stand in recess as we go into executive session at eight-thirty-four.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We reconvene on a decade of session at ten fifteen AM, PM. There is no action that needs to be taken at this time. The next meeting will be Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. Also, we have an announcement concerning Equity Committee that we wanted to make sure that we made before we left, that there will be a special meeting. The meeting will be noticed tomorrow and it will take place on Wednesday at five thirty PM after legal contracts to discuss the matters that were moved to new business and that were sent back to committee. We now stand adjourned.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Vice President Alexander as second to adjourn. It's been second by Member Hall. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing, we stand adjourned at 10. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
We stand adjourned. Thank you. Good night.